Yeah, sorry. We'll just be muted.
Yeah.
Great.
Are we wired?
No. Oh, yes, but it's muted.
Muted, yeah.
Present is Tom Anthony, Lad, make sure I get Lad.
Olson.
Olson. Don Young, myself, Leslie Dyer, is she on Zoom?
She's on there.
Elizabeth Bunker and Madge Stratten. Have a motion to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Approve the minutes from the July 11th, 2023 meeting.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Approve and sign Treasures Warrant Number Four. Motion.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? I'm gonna move Communications, B Rampage, I'm gonna move up to A and put MMA Annual Election to B. That's okay with everybody. You do what you want there. Thank you. That gives me courage. When Elizabeth Bunker tells you, do what you wanna do. We know we're all set.
And our father.
Those bunkers, you know. Okay, um, so this is a discussion, not arguments or name-calling or anything. And just to make everybody aware, the board approved last meeting gave their approval, our approval, for this event to take place. So, Ally, if you'd like to speak first?
Yeah, we, I just, as everybody knows, the Facebook post that I made, which is to make folks aware that I have been notified from by Marjorie that a few businesses had a spark that can burn with difficulty around parking and
In your backyard.
disruption because of our event. And, you know, it was never our intention to disrupt anything. That's why we wrote a proposal for the selectmen in the town meeting two weeks ago. And I just wanted folks to know that we're open to trying to accommodate everybody. You know, we didn't ever wanna hit anybody against anybody. My, the reason for my post was just to get some creative solutions that would work for everybody. And so I encourage folks to attend the meeting tonight in hopes of coming up with something that would work for all stakeholders involved. So, we are willing to do what we can to alleviate any tensions. You know, we, I think in your, I typed up a sort of an event plan for you guys to look at. You know, that can start, try to address the concerns and our sort of solutions that we can come up with as a team. The first one, I think, is, I can't even remember, Tom, what is the first thing?
Why Saturday and not Sunday?
Been asked if we consider moving to Sunday. I think as a, as a group, we decided that Saturday would, would attract a lot more patrons to our event. Because it's a weekend, folks that wanted to travel from the mainland, come and spend the night and not have to worry about work Monday morning. And we just felt that would be an all-around better turnout. All the years we did, we were afraid on Sunday, we were always, people were bugging us, oh, you should do it on Saturday night. You should do it. So we thought to bring it back, we would try this. As far as disruption to parking, you know, we have no problem coordinating office section of the parking lot for, for business parking, you know, to use. And, and I think Billy told, told somebody that there's 20 spots and go push to the bank that are gonna remain open. We're not shutting Main Street down. We're just gonna occupy the parking lot only. There's also the flea market field, there's the swap shop parking lot. We feel there's ample opportunities for people to park in order to get to all the businesses that they wish to patronize that evening. And what else would we say on there?
Disrupting business, lack of patronage.
Yeah, and, you know, basically, our, our thinking was, you know, as New Brooklin, for example, they shut down their, or lobster festival, blues festival, art bar, all kinds of different things. And bring in a bunch of people to a central location, and we think only increases attendance at all, at all, you know, venues. So, you know, it, our event's over by nine, we wouldn't expect everybody to just go home. We anticipate people going to the Sandbar or Skoll or wherever else when they get done. So, those were just sort of our thoughts and, and, you know, we're open to suggestions or ideas as well. But we just wanted everybody to know that we're open to, for working with people and.
Billy?
As far as coordinating off the parking lot, I think that would be more of a safety hazard than
Then probably unnecessary, given the amount of parking that's available and net factory. And there's, there's all kinds of parking that's really, you know, to not, to not, to my mind, it's a non, non-factor.
Okay, yeah, and I think
It's a great idea, but in my, in my mind.
I mean, we just wanted, you know.
You're trying to be accommodating, right?
Yeah, and I think I put in there, my dad talked to Nick Barton, who agreed to, while we're setting up, agreed to kind of safely get cars in and out of a parking lot to make sure the traffic flow remains. You know, and then we would officially block cars out by four o'clock that day. So, we're gonna set up around 10, we anticipate, and so we just have somebody kind of safely.
Got to have Millie turn the old ones back on.
What's that?
Got to have Millie turn the old ones back on.
Oh, yes, please, that would be great. Thank you.
Ally, what, what do you have in mind for, for setup exactly?
So, we have the lion's tent that I think when they set up, they have to go, Lad, you might know this, they have to use some of the files from the war.
Yeah, put that in the back and we got some pads that I got cut out, yeah.
We're gonna have some tables and chairs from the fire department. I think we reserve 15 tables and 50 chairs or something that we'll put around. Maybe some picnic tables and then some pop-up tents for coverage over concessions. I'm not exactly sure where concessions are gonna go yet, but we do, we would like the van to be set up for where concessions are on the Fourth of July, so that they can have access to the fire hall for the tower.
So basically, it's the perimeter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything they want to add to this? Pros, cons, ideas?
You're in the blue Jeep that's blocking our way out of our, our house. It's attacking, it's in there, I drive it.
I think peanut's gone.
Already approved, right, last meeting?
Yes, yeah, we gave our approval, yes. All, oh, yeah.
Well, I guess just to explain that I received emails and calls from some businesses and they asked that I bring it back to the selectmen to discuss it. So, why, you know, why this came up? I was happy to see all of the support that came on social media. You know, sometimes I get a little disappointed with the, with the Facebook streams and hope that there's no, you know, public shaming of anybody. But I think that the support that came out for this event was just incredible for the community to come out and support such a great fundraising event. So, I'm really happy for that.
And I agree. I mean, this, I think we all feel that this will bring more people to the other businesses that are open, you know? Not everybody wants to go to the parking lot. Some people wanna go to the Sandbar or the restaurant or Skoll.
You need someone.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we always, always enjoyed street dances.
What were the objections? Well, obviously, there aren't any we keep on the record because nobody's here to speak. Nobody's speaking to them here.
We don't have any of the people that
Right, well, no, I'm just, I don't ask for names. I'm just trying to get an idea what, what's the context?
Well, just the things that Ally spoke about, you know, disruption.
The issue?
Disruption to their business and the parking. Felt that there would be a loss of business.
I say, in the past, the chamber always did something similar to this. And it worked out really well. It brought a lot of people out. It was the businesses that came together and did that. And I don't know of any complaints back then, but I remember there was great having everybody together as a community, having good time.
Right.
We need that idea.
Well, I think everybody needs to go in with that positive attitude. Have fun, be safe.
Listen to some good music.
We know, we know somebody will be there to, to help you if you aren't, if you're naughty. We won't say any names. So, I think it'll be a great event. Yes, Ally?
I'd just like to say I appreciate this a lot and continue to promote the event. And we appreciate all of the support, all of the Facebook and stuff. We're very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you for putting it on.
If anybody has any more comments? If not, then, that's right, Al. You are so right. That's little Herb, young Herb. So, and, oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to quickly say I obviously missed the fairness of this meeting by the Jeff Coleman Music Award. I did need to go through music program last week. Since then, I've done over 200 hours of community service playing music for tax for military service.
That's right.
Fourth of July, the end memorial meeting. It's been a huge honor to serve my community and I'm going to miss out on one hour of offering.
No, I know. Thank you for joining. Well, I'm sure it'll all work out well, you know? And we'll see how it goes and move forward. If there are no more comments, if everybody's happy with what's going on, then I guess we'll just have to try to reassure those people that are upset or nervous that, to be reassured that they will find that it will be beneficial to them as well.
But we move on.
Yep. With that being said, we're going on to Communications, B, MMA Annual Election. Now, wait a minute, you guys. Just a minute now.
Turn your chair.
Naughty. Thank you.
Yeah, really. Three fourths of the meeting left.
See ya, see ya.
My mother's also here.
Yeah. I'm not the favorite anymore. Main Municipal Association.
Historically, the selectmen haven't really done a lot with this. It's to elect the Vice President and Executive Committee members for Main Municipal Association. Some of the things that you've talked about in the past are that you just really don't know any of the nominees. You're certainly welcome to vote for, as I said, the Main Municipal Vice President or the Executive Committee members. But it's really up to you.
Did we vote on these before? In previous issues?
You have any recommendations?
I don't know.
I think you may have just gone with what MMA recommends.
I'd like to move that we vote for candidates as presented.
That's a motion. Second. All in favor? Yeah, I can't, I don't
That way, at least our voters report that there's nothing we have.
I don't recall that we, that we did or we didn't know. Well, sorry, Dawn.
Okay, they're pulling your way anyway.
All of them, the band getting to. All right. Okay, number six speaker's from the floor. Yes, Jean?
I'm confident this has already been handled, but the Clarence Coleman's daughter, and he can come and rave at me on Sunday morning. Because of the car plugged into the old fireplace, I just wanna make sure that that's been taken care of. And like I said, confident it has been, but I just need to hear it from you guys. The outlets will be shut off and it's not released by the time of Fourth of July or something similar to that. Because if that car had ever caught on fire, we lost old Gurgon. And my dad would come up and kill his son.
I think Millie has already handled that issue.
So, I'll, yeah, it looks Monday morning. I've heard that, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you very much. Just come back and try to plug it in.
It works well.
Do they not have an outlet where they're staying?
Oh, yes, they do.
Oh.
They can't charge there anymore.
Right. Well, it would seem only right that you don't get, I don't know how it all works. I just see people hanging around with plugs, cords sticking out of their cars. And I'm thinking, how boring is that? I know it's supposed to be great, but I like the gas pump, fill it and leave. Instead of sitting there for lord only knows how long. So, anyway, thanks, Millie, for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. I'll turn them on for the next event and then turn them off the next day.
Is that the only time they used is, is during Fourth of July and any other things going on outside there? Okay, or it doesn't have anything to do with the inside at all? Okay. All right, moving on to seven committee and department reports and appointments. So, we'll go right into Wood and Curran Status Report.
I guess the significant items to me are that we did receive a final draft report about the vinyl code. I don't know if you recall, we had some grant funds and Wood and Curran was working on solutions to that covert and North Haven Road flooding. We did also submit punch list items to the contractor, final items for the transfer station project. The Shore and Harbor Grant is the grant for that vinyl code report. So, I'll be submitting some final invoices to the grant people.
So, we get a copy of that report just to
Of course. I was just waiting, it went to a few people for review and then would you like to see the draft?
Yeah.
Or, okay. No, please. We're still working on securing easements. And we're hoping to finalize that week, that this week. We've contacted, they've contacted Sheridan Corporation for some, also some items remaining at the Public Works Building.
What's left there? Out of curiosity, what's left of Public Works on Instagram?
Well, maybe Millie can explain more of what's on that punch list or
the floor does not have a drain in it. So, during the winter, when we put the box in, so melts and it plugs under the walls into my office. So, actually created quite a bit of damage. So, there's, there's some actual molding walls and stuff that we found the other day. So, my office is emptying all in the kitchen right now. That, so that needs to be dealt with.
They don't actually put a drain in the floor?
No, they're gonna, they're gonna put something from the floor up to the wall.
Put like a, like a wall barrier?
Some, some kind of barrier there and then they're gonna repair my office. And they're putting bollards up outside the garage doors. Again, sometimes it's very easy to hit the garage instead of the doorway.
Yeah.
Where all that stuff and everything.
Completely understand.
Yeah. And there was something else, oh, yeah, couple of the garage doors to get rain going in. And so they don't put something along the garage doors.
Try to help. Maybe, then you'll never stop it completely.
No, no.
Was there, no drain in the floor in, in the plans? About?
They don't put drains in floors without some very serious stuff outside. They put, they put drains.
Oh, probably with its gas.
EPA. There's some pretty, yeah, this is pretty extensive.
They're gonna put, they're gonna put some sort of a panel on the walls to, similar, similar to what's in our bathroom, which is like a
Yeah.
You know, something washable that
Well, a little bit, a little bit more waterproof.
Yeah, but you can't scrub up, you know, with the tool or whatever.
Yeah. They're still banging with a trough though.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Hopefully not.
Anything else on this?
No, no, I see how many questions that I've been trying to answer.
So. Dissolution of Housing Committee, 7B.
So, at our last meeting, the Housing Committee gave you their final reports.
Right.
They've now become a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. So, I didn't see any reason to continue that committee unless you, you know, certainly open for discretion. Appreciate all the work that the Housing Committee did and they're gonna be off on their own as the Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative. So, I just wanted to officially, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I just wanted to, the board, to consider officially dissolving that committee.
Just a question, this new Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative. Is there any, I mean, other than the fact that they, they used to be the Vinyl Haven Housing Committee? Is there any requirement for them to collaborate with us?
There's no requirement, certainly, I'm sure that they would
They, they probably want to, but they can work independently of the town.
They can, yes.
So, would a housing committee make sense as a go-between?
I think it would be, I think it would be the board
Right.
of selectmen
Right.
in, in my mind, that the I think it would be cumbersome.
Yeah.
You know.
Just out of curiosity, that's all. Motion is all, the committee?
Second.
Favor?
Thank you.
Reading this, just things that popped in my head.
Of course.
What, what would the board's involvement potentially be with it?
Well, for instance, if the nonprofit organization saw a piece of unused property that the town had and they had a, made a proposal to the town to say, you know, could, would you like to collaborate on a, a housing project with this piece of property? That is just one example.
So, the planning board probably had much more active role than we would at this point there.
Well, it would, it would actually have to, the, the selectman would have to be on board in that they would have to take it to town meeting. As an example, on Chabee, the town gave the housing organization a piece of property and the, the housing organization built two I don't know, I'm trying to think of, what do you have when a side, when houses are side by side? Yeah, yeah, they built, so they have two families living there. That was, it's just one example of things that can happen collaboratively with the town and the nonprofit.
So, again, the first point of contact would probably be with planning commission.
And when you're saying a life for a living?
That's what I meant. Right, yeah.
Okay, did we not vote? You did not vote, so I wrote it, but you're all in favor. The dissolution. Thank you. Moving on, 7C. Or something. Knox County Sheriff's 34.
Well, then.
You're up, Josh.
All right. Yeah, good evening. It's been a little while since we've been here, between the budget meetings and everything else. So, I did ran the report for June through the 21st. Due date, 74 calls for the two months.
Can't scrub up, you know, with the tool or whatever.
They're still banging with a truck though.
Yeah. Oh yeah. Hopefully not.
Anything else on this?
No, no, I see how many questions that I've been trying to answer.
Dissolution of Housing Committee, seven B.
So at our last meeting, the Housing Committee um. They do their final reports.
Right.
Uh, they've now become a um five oh one C three nonprofit organization. So I didn't see any reason to continue that committee unless you, you know, certainly open for discussion. Appreciate all the work that the Housing Committee did and they're gonna be uh off on their own. As the Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative. So uh, I just wanted to officially, um, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I just wanted to, the board to consider officially uh dissolving that committee.
Just a question, this new Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative. Is there any? I mean, other than the fact that they, they used to be the Vinyl Haven Housing Committee. Is there any? Requirement for them to collaborate with us?
There's no requirement, certainly, I, I'm sure that they would.
They, they probably want to, but they can work independently of the town.
They can, yes.
And so would a housing committee? Make sense as a go between.
I think it would be, I think it would be the board.
Right.
Selectmen.
Right.
In, in my mind, that the.
Yeah.
You know.
Out of curiosity, that's all. Motion is all the committee.
Second.
Just to elaborate a little bit on that, most um, I think almost all of the uh unbridged islands. Have uh their own uh version of a housing uh five oh one C three, a separate organization. And it gives them the opportunity um to apply for grants separate from the town.
Yeah, makes sense.
And other things, but anyway.
Reading this, just things that popped in my head.
Of course.
What, what would the board's involvement potentially be with them?
Well, uh, for instance, if um, the. Nonprofit organization saw a piece of unused property that the town had. And they had a, made a proposal to the town to say, you know, could, would you like to collaborate on a, a housing project? With this piece of property, that is just one example.
So the planning board probably had much more active role than we would at this point there.
Well, it would, it would actually have to, the, the selectmen would have to be on board in that they would have to take it to town meeting. As an example, on should be, the town um gave the uh housing organization a piece of property. And the, the housing organization built a, uh, two um. I don't know, I'm trying to think of, what do you have when a side, when houses are side by side? Yeah, yeah, they built, uh, so they have two families uh living there. That was, it's just one example of things that can happen collaboratively with the town and the uh nonprofit.
So again, the first point of contact would probably be with planning commission. That's what I meant.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, did we not vote? You did not vote, so I wrote it, but you're all in favor. The dissolution, thank you. Seven C. Knox County Sheriff's Report.
Well then.
You're up, Josh.
All right. Uh, good evening. Been a little while since we've been here, um, between the budget meetings and everything else. So I did ran the report for June uh through the twenty first. Today, seventy four calls for the two months. Um, obviously for the new members, we break it down to the officers that are out here. Um, some of it's dealt with on the phone, others are in person. Where you can figure out the in-person. Uh, I did watch one of your board meetings, I don't know if it was last month, you were talking about parking tickets.
Yes.
So, yeah, so I did some digging on that, typically we as the county do not do parking enforcement. So as I reread both item contracts, we do enforce town ordinances for you.
Right.
If it is something that you as the town would like to do, we can assist you with it. But it's more gonna be, you have to order the tickets. It comes down to your town attorney, our district attorney won't touch parking tickets in court. So it's a town ordinance, yes. However, that you, if you do adopt the plan that you want to make well, you can do that, I will point in the right directions.
As Madria pointed it out, um, that it would be an administrative issue for this office.
I think it would, it'd be all.
And then some guy, some man, I should say, not guy, I don't know, I'm not sure who he was. Commented that there are businesses that deal with that type of thing for you, for towns with parking. Do you know anything about that?
I'd be fine, those usually for like complexes for like building things, I don't think that's anything.
Yeah, I didn't know quite what he meant.
I, I've never heard it, but I mean, we can, we will definitely work with you if you want to, when that's something we can enforce it. Through you, we'll just essentially write a ticket.
But for example, when somebody pulls into, onto Main Street, going the wrong way. That is a, that is your department, not the town, right? So that seemed to be. Um, starting to become a problem, I felt. With a lot of people parking the wrong way on Main Street, I think it's dangerous.
Just today when I was coming in from Hall in the middle of the day, somebody pulled in, there was all kinds of people walking in just.
Yeah.
Uh, no, in front of the grocery store.
Yeah, I mean, it is dangerous.
I get it.
Yeah, Millie.
Could we make that some sort of a, like a warning that? You could put under our windshield, so they do an actual ticket, just warning that a ticket may follow this. Uh, you know, just kind of let them know that we see it and.
Do you wanna be the ticket lady?
Get, we'll get your golf cart.
No, we can't, no golf carts.
I mean, I, if, if I saw one, I would do it, but I'm not gonna like. In my white, my white Dodge cruiser.
I think it's, it's an uphill battle we face.
Exactly.
Both islands.
Probably facing every small community in the state.
Yeah, I mean, but for the islands, I mean, you play the bullet for three and a half months, they come and they go.
Well, it's not just off island.
No.
You do? Well, it is dangerous and I wish people wouldn't do it because it is, you know.
Yeah, I think that was the other thing we had an issue with that we talked about was the flea market on, on Saturday and that we talked about maybe having you. Do a swing through, you're out here. Give a few warnings and see if people can get off the sidewalks, we talked about that, I don't know how. The next Saturday went after we had that meeting.
It was worse, worse.
Worse.
No, um, we put them up and we have to take them right back down again because we can't file. And I don't know if there's space there now because I think it's been, hasn't been repaved since that last time.
Where's that?
The signs that go up the road, the sidewalk.
Oh.
It was like ten of them that they.
I know, but could we do, perhaps you could put up a couple along there on the grass? Right? No.
I mean, I have some, but no, I mean, I.
I mean, the metal signs or?
Yeah.
Well, for, for a few years, they were like ten along there, but, which was a little. But even if we just had a couple, it might, might be helpful, but there again, when you go to another town, do you park on their sidewalks? I mean, it just, I don't, I don't understand how, but it doesn't matter what I think as far as that goes. Stephanie, you had a comment?
Question with that to the, the sidewalk parking. I know that Josh has said that Knox County doesn't enforce. The parking, but isn't that a law that you're not supposed to park on the sidewalks? And I, I know just parking on the side of the road, people could probably squeeze by through that. And would you have any fault if they parked blocking the entire sidewalk? I mean, as a walker, you know, it's, you have nowhere to walk, you have to step into the street to get around a car that's walking up the entire sidewalk.
I would have to walk, to be honest with you, I don't think I've ever seen a law, but I would have to. And I will.
So if you see somebody parked the wrong way and you drive by, Josh, do you, no, I'm just curious because I don't. If you saw Mike parked in front of the bank going the wrong way and he was not in his vehicle, would you stop and wait for him to come out of the bank?
In all practicality, if you catch it, the bank is always, I mean, it's, it's a known spot.
Right.
Um, you know, it's a common sense thing, somebody pulls out and you're just sitting there and, you know, I mean, I just. Everybody's done, yes, I would sit and wait, if I had the time, I would sit and then.
I was just, I'm just curious, like to, if a couple of people got a parking ticket or violation, whatever it is. That they'd say, oh gosh, I want, I'll pay a hundred bucks or whatever the fine is, fifty bucks, I don't wanna pay that again, that's a waste of money. Then the next person say, well, they got, you know, a ticket, maybe I won't do what Mike did because he got fined.
Unfortunately, it's the uphill battle that we all face, that while he's not around or he's not here, so you can go do it and then it just. You can't be everywhere at once.
Oh, I know that.
You know, fighting back and forth if you will, but.
Correct.
I mean, yes, we will address it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think I saw anything else in the other meetings. That we're all concerned.
Jaywalking.
Jaywalking, there's plenty of that. I think our biggest issue last meeting was the parking at the flea. That was, that was the big thing. And then, you know, just random stuff that we were discussing earlier, so.
And it is a big thing, whether you, you know, was it safety on the sidewalk or emergency vehicles trying to get through.
I agree. Well, and that's, I mean, that's something that I would suggest, you know, being such a town ordinance, whatever, not that Millie needs more work, but work with Chief Candage. And if that's the case, then rifle one side of the park to make it, that it doesn't happen. We have, I mean, we're fighting it on, on North Haven, that we are so close that we can't get a truck through and. That town meeting, we just talked about putting the sides up, just shuffle inside of road.
Okay.
Just so we could.
Right. Yeah.
So.
Did we ever figure out who was in charge of the flea market?
Kathy, but I don't think there's actually any group. Anymore, I believe it's just Kathy.
She has no help.
A lot to ask, but she has no help. Um, I mean, we're in overtime. You know, on, on weekends. But. I guess, you know, there's something that we can come up with that's an easy fix that would take an hour and maybe I could talk to a couple of the guys and get them to go.
Parking on the sidewalk is in parking ordinance section five, it should be unlawful to park a motor vehicle in a manner that obstructs or impedes pedestrians' use of a crosswalk. It shall be unlawful for any person to park a motor vehicle on any section of the sidewalk or portion thereof.
I actually had that out, I forgot to bring it up, thank you, Gabe. Um, okay, it's Madria, you will have your hand.
I, I just, I mentioned that um. An effective way to put up a little sign is to order, just some, order some. Like the political signs that just stick in with the metal things.
Right.
That's what we did on should be, when people had different events and we didn't want them to park in a certain road. We just, you know, every few feet put up a, they're, they're relatively small, but they, people see them and say, oh, I can't park here. And they're easy to just stick in and pull, pull back out after the event.
Okay.
It would just take some volunteer to probably fifteen minutes to push them in where we, you know, where we didn't want.
Hey, it would be, it would be to the advantage of the vendors at the flea market for. More of the regular vendors to step up and give Kathy a hand with this kind of thing. Uh, especially since how, especially since how it's a concern for the town, both. Uh, for public safety and for emergency vehicles to get through.
I don't think they're very expensive, I think you know what I mean, they're just like.
I mean, if the town, if the town was going to provide that.
In the glass.
What? I'll do it, you just have to show me where you want it, I'll order the sign, I'm, I'm there setting up every, oh, you have to do that.
Oh, right, yeah.
Uh, one of the bankers, my daughter.
I'll make Elizabeth. Once a sign. So you'll be the sign lady?
I'll be the sign lady.
Now we just need to get some signs.
Okay.
You want the ticket?
They'll get ordered up, so, great.
I mean, do you have a?
Okay, we're gonna move on now, if you don't mind, thank you Andrea for volunteering, that's great. If nobody else has anything left on this.
We're gonna get some signs made up, is that what?
Elizabeth's gonna. I'll check into it.
Yeah.
I can go shopping tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I like to go shopping with other people.
Maine Island Coalition Appointment, Catherine Haley, seven, thank you, Josh.
Now my.
Catherine Haley. Thanks, my.
Thank you, everybody.
You can stay longer.
I spoke with Catherine Haley, uh, who works at the bank, I think you all know Catherine. And she has agreed, if, if you all agree that uh she will be our representative for the Maine Islands Coalition. I think it's, you know, she's young and business person in town, I think she'd be great.
Yeah. We haven't had.
Just making, can you just make a motion?
Gabe, is it annually?
Second.
Sorry, what, what, what was it?
The Maine Island Coalition, is it annually or two years?
I think it's three years.
Oh.
I think it is, but Darlene went, Darlene went down. I know, I think I did two terms and I, I thought it was three years, but maybe it's two.
I thought at the last meeting, when we talked about it, we said three.
Maybe, the list is in the other.
I didn't, I didn't bring it with me, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I missed the motion and the.
Uh, motion to boot Catherine.
Okay. On table. Thank you. Number eight, old business CRP grant, streetlight LED conversion. So I would say that's you, Gabe.
Yeah, and I guess I just wanted to be on, um, it was something you want, you were going to discuss at this meeting. Um, my request at the last meeting was to review um the information and determine if. The board wanted to make a commitment to allocating funds in the next um fiscal year budget. To support the project, so I'm, I'm on to answer any questions or just, yeah, address any concerns that. Or try to address any concerns folks might have.
Gabe, the town's spending was around twenty-three thousand as long as the grant came through, that correct?
Yeah, and, and I would say I would give that a little plus or minus based on the fact that there's gonna be that assessment of the streetlights first. So some may go away if the, if the town feels like these are no longer necessary. It's possible there could be an addition, I, you know, we don't know until that assessment takes place and that will, you know. Be community input plus emergency management plus Department of Public Works, so I think it's just based on the, the best case scenario. So if we replaced every single light that's currently up, that's how much it would be.
Then Fox Island Electric's gonna do the assessment?
No, Fox Island Electric does not have the capacity to do the assessment, we're working in collaboration with them. So we would outsource the assessment and the company that we've been communicating with is called Affinity LED. Um, so they've done, I don't know how many, but like lots and lots of installs across uh Maine. So um, we're, we're, we would likely go with them, but of course, North Haven is the contracting entity. So it would be a decision, I think, between Vinyl Haven and a North Haven in terms of, you know, which, which provider um to go with. In terms of doing the assessment and the install.
Yeah, if I had a quick question.
Yeah.
We have two sets of numbers here and I'm assuming that the twenty-three thousand four forty-nine dollars is for the actual cost of the lights. Uh, or maybe it's the number after, because below on the next paragraph, we have eighty-four thousand six seventy-two. Is that the, that the price before a grant?
Yeah, that would be the, that's the total cost of the assessment and install for Vinyl Haven's portion. So that's what would, it would cost if we didn't have any grant funding.
Okay, yeah, I thought so, but I just wanna be clear on it.
Yeah.
The only thing you're asking, asking the town to commit for right now was the twenty-three and change.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Gabe, did you ever find that article I was telling you about?
You know, Pam, I didn't do the search, I got as, I got up to uh the, all of the articles. I mean, all of the um additions of the magazine or journal or whatever you call it, but I didn't take the time to search every single one of them.
Okay, yeah, that's too bad, that was an interesting article. It was in that MMA magazine.
Yeah.
About uh, all about this type of um streetlight, uh, LED streetlights, yeah, it was interesting. But I couldn't, I couldn't remember what year, like it was two years ago, probably that I read it. And now we um just continue getting that magazine for all of us because it was so awesome.
The office still gets one.
Who decided to keep one, get one call.
I think the office still gets it.
Do they have a uh digital version, it's less expensive?
Yes, but I'm not sure if they have a, you have to have a login, I'm not sure how much of the site you can access.
I think you can see those, I went on, when I went on, I was able to see them as, I think they were PDFs. Um, I don't know if it was the current version, but you certainly got the, the archived versions.
Alrighty. So should we?
So this will have to go to town meeting in the budget, annual budget?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. So all we're doing is saying, we, we would propose this at town meeting.
Yeah, and this will enable, if we do get the funds, to be like saying, yes, we're ready to move forward. There isn't like any question that like, oh, well, we haven't decided whether we're gonna do this or not. Um, and, you know, normally we'd kinda do it the other way around, right, where we'd get, make all these decisions in advance. But because of the timing of everything coming together and the changing over of the uh board leadership, you know, we needed to proceed. So we're sort of, yeah, you know, but we don't need to allocate the funding until next fiscal year anyway, so.
Do you need a, a motion on record?
Yeah, it would be great to have it in the minutes, just so if we have to demonstrate to the state that there is commitment, um.
The motion would be to support um LED streetlight conversion.
So to allocate in the, the next fiscal year's budget, twenty-three thousand, whatever the change.
No, no, we need to say that we, we would be willing to. Share. Streetlight conversion project.
I think it's really the la, uh, the former Pam, where you're demonstrating that you're ma, making a commitment to, to um. The allocation, that you'll pursue that allocation in next year's fiscal budget, and I'm sorry, I don't have any um. Yeah, because if we, if we need to show any type of, you know, level of commitment for the grant. We would need to have some sort of minutes documentation saying the board is like, yes, we're, we're willing to allocate this funding. And of course, you know, as pointed out, it would be in the budget, which would then have to be approved at town meeting, but at least the commitment would be demonstrated.
And that had a one-year payback, basically?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, not, not very long, yeah.
Huge payback, yeah. What, what are we paying now for electric lights for the year? I, I remember the budget numbered out.
Gee, off the top of my head, it's something like twenty-three thousand or, I can't.
I mean, it was the cost, it was like the cost of the lights. On the, yeah, but then we're talking about a sixty-three percent reduction, so it wouldn't be.
On the, yeah, but then we're talking about a sixty-three percent reduction, so it wouldn't be basically a year and a half there.
Yeah.
So you would just be voting to support the Community Resilience Partnership Regional, um, Grant Program for Vinyl Haven? For an LED conversion and to commit to, um, budgeting that amount of working. How would you say that? Work?
Commit to allocate the funds next fiscal year to support.
Just how Lizzie said it.
Right, what'd they say?
Okay.
I'll get it.
All right, you write it down and read it back, please.
A motion to commit to allocate funds next fiscal year to support the Community Resilience Partnership with F I E C and North Haven? Is that okay, Gabe?
Maybe you wanna say that for the LED streetlight conversion, just to specify what it's for, yeah.
F I E C for LED conversion.
If it goes to town meeting, obviously, we had to get it approved. That's obviously subject to town meeting approval.
Right, the fact that you're supporting it is one thing, but it does have to go to town meeting to be approved.
I think they just wanna seize when they're doing their grant.
Yeah, but we want to make sure that we have that in there so that it's continued upon approval.
Yeah, and normally, like, when I would submit a grant, I would submit it with, um, you know, like, that we would have some documentation of, like, here's the wording from the minutes, uh, the, where the funding was discussed and, and, you know, so I couldn't include that because we hadn't done it yet. But so if they, if the state comes back and asks for that, then we'll, we'll have something.
Okay. Do you want to hand me your book and I'll read that motion?
Let me read this circle. Let me clean this up.
No, okay, well, it doesn't matter. I can read it.
Commit to allocate funds next fiscal year to support.
And go down?
Yep, support the Community Resilience Partnership.
Okay.
With North Haven and.
All right, so I would make, I am going to make a motion that we commit to allocate funds next fiscal year to support the Community Resilience Partnership with, with North Haven and F I E C for LED conversion. Streetlight conversion.
Okay.
Does that sound okay, Gabe?
That's great. Thank you, Pam.
Okay.
Yeah.
It feels like you have to have the town meeting approval.
Well, this is just for her to, to, so she has it for the grant by the end of August.
Anything that was in the budget.
But so this, this would not come up for a vote until whenever. So did you vote or you're not voting?
I vote, but I still presume that it, it caused a commitment that the town hasn't made.
Yeah, recognizing that, of course, and there's always a chance. So if that's the case, what it means is you don't get all the streetlights. Cause, you know, you're not, you're, you're only gonna get a certain number of streetlights.
I'm against, I'm favored in doing it.
Wait just a minute, guys, one at a time. Okay, lead?
I would just say, and just, because it's North Haven's grant, and basically we're just buying into it because we have more lights. So all we're doing is a saying, we, if approved in the town budget next fiscal year, that we are gonna put that in.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, Dawn?
No, that's, as long as we make sure that it's not a commitment, spend the money without town approval.
Well, yeah, and we can't do that without town approval. So we're all, are we all set, Marjorie? Okay, thank you. Moving on. New business, discontinuance by abandonment sailor's way.
Uh, this is a request from Nile Conlon. There's only two people that live on that road. I did write letters to both, uh, official letters, uh, even on Nile, Nile. Uh, and his wife requested it. Um, I sent letters saying that, uh, if it was abandoned, that they would have one hundred percent responsibility for that road. Uh, and we are not maintaining any easement on the road. Um, and then we ha- I had to wait thirty days to see if I got any response. I did not receive any response. Uh, so there's no objection. I see no reason, um, not to discontinue.
And then put more.
How far, how far down does that town road go? All the way, or all the way to the end? So the entire road would become private?
Well, no, it's just this.
Frank and Thomas.
Right, it's just this little, so would that?
Yes.
So would that be, it's just that little spur like that?
Just that one.
Just that one little place.
And then the only property owners on that road?
Uh, the two property owners are Wendy.
Wendy Richards?
Wendy Richards and the Conlon, Nile and Clark Conlon.
Yeah, that.
And, and the other people have no objection to this?
I wrote to them and waited the required thirty days and heard no, nothing. Sorry.
Motion? Second?
Here it is, Wendy Richards, yeah. They live in Florida.
And that was your lot to her, is that what? No response, so. All right, okay, so.
I said.
Um, that somebody wants. Got a motion?
Yeah, motion, go ahead and, I, move forward with it. Second?
All in favor? Okay, um, Island Village Childcare Sewer Hookup Waiver.
Um, okay.
And we discussed this today at our sewer meeting.
Oh, sorry.
Um, they've asked that we waive the hookup fee.
So I got a little note from the Board of Directors asking for a waiver from the hookup fee. And I'm not sure what happened. Um, but we realized that the childcare building was hooked up to the sewer, but no connection fee was ever collected. It was done in twenty twenty-one, as far as I can determine. Um, so I contacted them, I contacted, I found out that Dwyer's Plumbing and Heating did the hookup with the assistance of Will Coughins. He was working for Main Water at the time. Um, one of my big issues was that there was no, uh, what is called a house service form for that property, which shows where it's hooked into the sewer. And the reason that that's important, you know, in the future, if somebody for some reason needs to know where they're hooked in, um, we didn't have any information about it. And there really should have been a connection fee, uh, as well as the, the so-called hookup fee. But regardless of that, and I went back, well, we went to the sewer, I went to the sewer commissioners today. And they're not recommending that the selectmen waive the connection fee. Um, so, and in the or- the sewer ordinance says that we will charge this connection fee for any new hookups. So there you have it. The selectmen have, uh, are, the selectmen is the enforcing authority of the sewer ordinance. So we have someone that hooked up to the sewer, did not have any permission, did not give us any information about where they were hooking up. Uh, we're simply, after the fact, collecting the information, uh, on the sewer, uh, hookup house service form and collecting the eighteen hundred dollars. Uh, which is stated in our sewer ordinance that we'll collect that when somebody new hooks into the sewer. We don't get that many in, um, most people were the origi- you know, original users. Uh, there have been a few. I just had one this past year, Greg Rosaro down on the sands, had a new house and he hooked in, paid the connection fee of eighteen hundred dollars. And, and, but the, the, um, the childcare did pay the water.
Apparently, they called the SDC.
Say, say that again.
They did pay the SDC system development charge.
To the water.
Fourteen hundred dollars.
Side, but nobody collected, um, the fee on the wastewater side.
How did this get by, I mean, Main Water?
It's not.
I mean, they, they, they proved the hookup, they, they were involved with setting this up.
It's supposed to be done on the ta- on the town side. It should be done by the local plumbing inspector, um, and the management of the town. But, you know, I don't know why. I don't know why it wasn't done.
So there's no official paperwork filed?
There was no paperwork filed when they hooked into the sewer.
But.
We just got the paperwork this past month.
But Main Water was involved with the hookup because Will Coughins.
Well, he, he was there to help with the stub and the water shut off, you know, but as far as anything else, he's.
I mean, I don't, I don't know how it all.
It's not up to Main Water.
Right, I mean, I mean, it was twenty twenty-one too, right? So it was very middle of, towards the end of COVID, we're in the middle of this, this whole craziness, we've been wanting people to ask for it in the future year.
But the issue seems to be, do we waive the fee at all?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So our, um, the connection fee is the lesser of the cumulative total of annual debt cost charges made since the startup of the sewer or ten times the debt cost charge for the year during which the connection permit is requested. It sounds complicated, but it was, um, now it would be more actually because the deck service charge is more. But at the point that they hooked up, it was forty-five dollars per quarter. So it's forty-five times four times ten, which is eighteen hundred. Um, and the ordinance also says the town shall charge a permit and inspection fee, a connection fee, and a system development charge for all hookups. Original users are exempt from the connection fee and system development charge. All I'm trying to connect, collect is the connection fee.
So a motion that we go, that we, uh, do not waive the fee?
Well, the, um, commissioners today at our meeting, we felt that it would set a precedent, and not a good precedent, for another nonprofit. If they were to, you know, request a stub to hook into the sewer and they would say, well, you gave this person, gave this outfit, you know, you waived their fee. So we want ours waived. And we just didn't really want to set that precedent. And also, um.
School pay?
I'm sorry?
Did the school, that, that school system pay?
No, it's nothing to do with, it's their, it's their business.
No, no, what I meant was the school was basically, is, uh, then, do they have to pay a connection fee when they're connected to school?
The child.
Another, the high school.
The school, this has nothing to do with the school.
I'm just asking a question. Did they or did they not?
I don't think they're hooked into the sewer. They have their own system.
Do they still?
Well, they. Anyway, um, yeah, this has nothing to do with, with that, um.
I'm just curious, if there was a, no.
Right. What we thought might be helpful, because somebody suggested, well, why don't they ask for the money? For a donation from some, you know, lions or some organization. And I said, that is entirely up to them. It's not up to the sewer commissioners to go ask for their, them to have money given to them. So what we thought, Tom, excuse me.
My bad.
What we thought might be the, uh, might be helpful to them would be to, like we do with system development charge with water. If you can't afford to pay the full amount when you get hooked in, we give you a year and, and it's applied to your quarterly bill. And so you have a year to pay, pay for it. So we determined it would be four hundred fifty dollars per quarter. And then they would have it paid for. Okay.
No, I'm just, my only concern is that was, was going on for, uh, two years. Um, we didn't pick up on it. And.
It's not.
And they didn't pick up on it. I don't know whether they knew or should have known. Somebody should have known. You know, the contractors that, that put it together, somebody should have known that this fee and, and these, this stuff needed to take place, but it didn't take place. So.
So that's where.
See what my concern is?
That's where, that's where the licensed plumbing inspector should have come in and inspected that whole hookup.
Right.
And then signed off on the, um, form that the plumbers should have filed at that time.
Right. That didn't happen either.
No. So.
That's a bit of a sticky, okay. I, I think though, that for the sake of moving forward, we ought to go ahead and
motion that they do pay the fee and move on.
Yeah. Then offer what you suggested, breaking up in over four quarters.
Yes.
Yeah, well, that would be on the sewer. It's.
Right.
Nothing to do.
Yeah.
Without script. So, uh, giving them the option to pay over. We just wanted to say, go ahead and collect the fee.
Yeah. We just want basically want to mostly deny their request to waive the, yes, waive the fee, but.
I guess that would be the motion.
Uh, yeah, if that's the, you know, if you want to take the recommendation of the sewer commissioners, which I think is correct.
They'll disagree. Yeah, I don't disagree.
So one of you guys want to make that motion then?
Motion to deny the request to waive the fee.
Second, all in favor? Um, nine C, twenty twenty-four wastewater budget.
Um, so on this spreadsheet, you'll see, um, the twenty twenty-three budget and what we've spent to date. And then the proposal for the twenty-three, twenty-four wastewater budget. Um, the big increase is the fact that we approved two employees instead of one under the main expense for Main Water routine expense. You see that it went from a hundred and twelve, or almost a hundred and thirteen thousand to a hundred and forty-five thousand. So, um, that's a, a five point two percent increase over the previous year. So I am suggesting that we increase the quarterly debt service amount to sixty-five dollars per quarter and the fixed charge to eighty dollars per quarter. Sewer commissioners looked at that budget this morning and approved it. Um, I don't know, do you have any questions? I guess the, uh, the, the power cost was increased for the year twenty-three, twenty-four because we've spent uh, sixty-two thousand and we'd only budgeted fifty thousand for the fiscal year twenty-three. So I did increase that budget as well. The only other item that was over on twenty twenty-three was the generator maintenance and diesel. But as you can see in, in the fiscal year twenty-three, we spent an inordinate amount of money, the forty, forty, almost forty-three thousand, forty-three thousand, forty-three hundred dollars, which was a lot more than in previous years, but we needed, uh, a, a total, uh, workup of our generator down there. So we shouldn't, uh, have to do much work to that in the next few years. And I'm also trying to accumulate more money in our, um, equipment and capital reserves.
How much is left on that loan? Do you?
On the loan? Oh, yeah. I think it, it's at least another seven years.
Seven.
My, off the top of my head.
Is it two thousand four?
Well, we refinanced in two thousand eleven with the Maine Bond Bank.
Right.
It was originally a USDA loan. It was originally a USDA loan, but when interest rates went down um below what we were paying to USDA. We refinanced through the main bond bank.
I remember that, yeah. That was a good move on your part, Marjorie.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
You have any questions? Do you want to study it more? We can wait till the next meeting to approve it.
I would, I'd like to make a motion table next meeting, I would study one. I second.
On the table?
I'm happy to answer questions if you want to stop by, get more detail or anything.
Hey, Marjorie. Report of town manager.
So, I don't know if you remember or not, but uh the previous, for some. Lad and Tom weren't here, but the board voted to assist with the um. Main Health Access Foundation Grant Program, this Dr. Jonathan Busco will be here. Uh, on July thirty-first for an initial meeting about the grant program and to talk with people. He asked that if the board of selectmen were available, uh, he'd love to uh meet with you. He's coming at ten o'clock. Um, I did put a copy of the, his, his original PowerPoint presentation. And this is in conjunction with the, the medical center. They asked the selectmen to sign on to this program and it's paid, paid for through a grant. So I guess what I'm just, I'm reminding the selectmen that he is going to be here on the thirty-first if you're available.
Like, why would they? He's going to be up here?
Yes. Um, we already talked about Rampage, unless you want to talk about it more? Oh, and then you asked me to check on that Islesborough Select Board Statement Regarding Sighting of Offshore Wind Manufacturing, remember that?
Yeah, yeah.
So I called Janet, she's the town administrator over in Islesborough, and it turns out that it was actually the Islesborough Land Trust. That initiated that statement. Someone named Steve Miller brought it to the select board for approval. It was written by the land trust, not by the board of selectmen. Um. And their point is they would like to see any facility built at Mac Point, not Sears Island. Uh, I don't have any information about any potential specific project. Either at Sears Island or at Mac Point, um. I guess I don't really have an opinion about this either way. Uh, Je- Janet was instructed to send copies of this statement to various entities. And that's how we received a copy of it. Uh. As I'm sitting here, I'm not sure this is our fight, uh, but if you'd like more information, I'm happy to get it.
It's kind of curious as well, there's no projects plan, I wonder what prompted the. All in trust, so, looks like that. Interesting.
Well, clearly, they wouldn't want it on Sears Island. I mean, they. Will attack, attack that, put that into conservation. I don't know exactly what. How much of it is in conservation easement? But. I agree with Marjorie, if that's what they're worried about.
Doesn't really have much to do with us.
Not really. Um, and the traffic's going to be the same as far as boat, big, you know, freighters or. Go up by through anyway, right?
Yeah, it's mainly cruise.
Yeah. So.
Anyway, that's the information that I got about the history of that, um. Thank you. Statement.
But it would be good to stay in touch with what's going on, it's certain.
Mm-hmm.
So, any information she gets would be helpful, send along to us, yeah. Okay. Sign up, Marjorie, anything else? That's all I've got. All right, we'll move on to eleven, report of members. Don.
Yeah, I, a couple meetings ago, I proposed that we. Put together a policy regarding major projects for the island. And I. Put together an outline that basically is called for. A review after each part, major project, and I put down three hundred thousand, that's just a starting point, we can decide whether that's. Appropriate or not. And I'd like to, you know, we start off by looking at the project, did we stay within budget, including finance part? Uh, did we, did the project meet our expectations or see them? Uh, what was the feedback in the community? And we know from some of the projects, the feedback hasn't been real good on, I think, the, the. Couple of them, so we, we need to take that into account, but at the end of the day, what we're really looking at is, did we get what we wanted? And what are the takeaways? What would we do different or what, what works? So I think that we, any, any project like that, we ought to do that, and. Uh, my suggestion is we have two board members that would inform this audit along with staff to help on the numbers. Make sure we had all the numbers and then report to the full select board our findings and go from there. I think it makes a good, common sense idea. Makes sense, so I can not pose it, but uh if you want to review it, make a suggestion, we can bring it up to another media. No rush on it, I think we've, this is a, this is common practice in business for most major projects. I think we should have something similar here.
Is this the policy?
This is proposed, I'm not.
No, I mean, this right here, is this?
I'd like to have it, other imports on there to modify it and if there's anything that we like air change. But this is uh the first, the draft of what my draft. Uh, so I'd bring it up for review and ask us that we, uh, in the next meeting, discuss it and. And I'm prepared to make a proposal with the feedback we have. Thank you, Don.
So, you would be able to start right away with a class project that was just completed?
Transport station, we can look back as far as we want to, because there are lessons learned, we all, we all learn as we go, I would hope. And uh, now the more we do these reviews, the better we should get at it.
Okay, and I understand. What you're getting at, but it's like after, it's kind of like. Closing the door after the, the door after the horse got out, I mean, how, how's it gonna help? Will it help in the next project?
Yes.
Because Marjorie's very. I'm not saying I don't agree with it, I'm just saying, like, as far as uh the transfer, you were on that. On transfer station on that with making sure that they were. Did what they were supposed to do within budget.
Well, this, this is not different though, this is more. Did the project meet what we expected of it? Did it come out the way we planned, the way the picture we had? Because the generic could be totally different. What we wanted it to be, come out the way we want to, were the finances correct?
Right.
Was the community feedback, were they happy?
So, no, the community is not happy, and so what are you going to do about it?
Well, nothing, but then we learn for the next. Don said, any company that I work for, we've done.
No, I understand that, I'm just saying, each project is so different that it's, I don't know, I'm not thinking.
Well, we could.
But I don't disagree with that.
Well, I mean, in all honesty, community, community, when you change something as big as you changed, as we changed the transportation, I wasn't involved with that project at all. But my very first section, when I went, the first time I went to transport stations, I went in the normal gate. Been going to since I moved back out here and that's not the way to go in anymore.
Right.
So, everybody probably did exactly the same thing and some people probably weren't happy about it. So.
I think.
Those kinds of things are, like, this, this community feedback that, that's productive and this community feedback, I don't like it because it's changed.
Right.
You know, that, and that, that, that you kind of differentiate when you go through something like this, you can.
Right.
Read out the hate, the chat from the, the weed, kind of.
Millie.
I think one of the biggest problems is the lack of community involvement in the planning process. We've got to find a way to get. The island taxpayers to come into these meetings and hear what the plan is and how. You know, and then get their feedback, you know, at the planning process and, and that's going to be a difficult part, but that's something that. Involved.
Well, and how many times have we done that, where we've had meetings after meeting after meeting about the new public works?
Yeah.
Property and building, we talked about it for several years, and then when it's finally happening, people go. Well, I didn't know, what about this, what about that? We've talked about this for two years and nobody comes to the meeting, so you're absolutely right.
And it's the same way with.
And it's.
Main Street project.
Yeah.
The transport station, so there's got, I think.
I think that's the biggest thing.
I think this is a great idea, but add to it, hopefully, that are involved, the community, get them active in these.
That would be one of the takeaways, you know, if we do a review, how can we do better on it?
Yeah.
It's still a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it would be a learning process, I mean, when I was in business, we had exactly the same thing.
Well, I don't disagree with it, but I don't think you're going to get, we can't force people to come to the meetings.
No.
So that's a hard time.
We didn't even get quorum this time, doing that. For the uh, what, annual meeting, so we could have the meeting, but we couldn't discuss any new business, we didn't have a quorum.
Oh, nobody was there?
They were there, but they weren't enough.
Oh, well, yeah.
But anyway, I think this is a start, I'm not saying it's perfect, it's something to build on.
Are you going to um write up something more detailed or is this?
This right here, this is a stat, if you have suggestions or ideas, add to this, we will review it and discuss it in the next board meeting.
Okay.
Kind of day in that you want to learn anything you can, that you can use, that would be useful to know in the future.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, the end of the day. Because, you know, every project we have. Very few are perfect, and what do you learn from it that you could do differently next time, or this works great, we'll keep doing it.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
I don't need people to use sidewalks.
How do you get people to use sidewalks? I don't blame a lot of people for not wanting to use the sidewalks, I'll be honest with you. Yeah, I know, people.
No, I'm talking for the boardwalk and main street.
Right.
Super soakers.
Super soakers, I think, um. When we get things hopefully completed, the signage.
I said it'll be good for them to walk around.
Yeah. Signage will help and.
Those things at the airport where you're like.
I don't know, like, just. It's always a little tongue in cheek, but. Side of the road, there's a curb, that's, I don't know how many signs you could put up to say, to be more obvious, there's a sidewalk, they had not, so. Of course, I had a, at my old house, I had a great idea. They used to come down the quarry on the wrong side of the road and sidewalks was over there, so I was going to put my motion check the sprinkler right down the line.
Thank you.
Then Dyke said, put another sign up, she told yourself.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, Pam.
Thanks, Dave. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you.